Pretty close to zero. So the fixed income market, in fact, we were able to generate 3.3 percent. Again, we outperformed the index, which is a Barclays index, and it was up 2.25 percent. So overall, for that fiscal year, 2013 and 14, we've had a very good investment year. This shows it a little bit differently, it just breaks it down into dollars. And you see here, as of June the 30th of 14, we had $9,168,000 in stocks. That represented 44.8 percent of your overall account. The dividends that are paid to these stocks is a yield of 2.1 percent. And so therefore, on the $9.1 million we had in stocks, it paid dividends of $192,700. Then the fixed income you see here, these are the different bonds. We had $3 million in U.S. corporate bonds, at 840,000 in agency bonds, 2.1 million in municipal bonds, taxable. And then Jenny Mae and Fannie Mae, these are our divisions of the federal government also. You see, we had amounts there. accrued interest is just simply the amount of interest that you have earned, but it has not been paid to you yet. Because bonds typically will pay every quarter or semi-annually, but during the time before that's your pay date, the bond is earning interest every single day. So that's what their accrued interest is. And then we had $2.9 million in cash. Our total portfolio value was of June 30th, $20,450,834. And the interest and dividends generated $484,000 to the account in income, dividends and interest stock for the year. Just a pie chart here showing a little bit different. You see, we've got equities here at 45 percent, fixed income at 41 percent, the cash, the cash equivalents of 14 percent. So that shows how we have your high, so to speak, diversified. This shows, again, how the different sectors that we have invested money in, energy, materials, industrials, consumer discretionary, all the way down this town. And it shows here how we have invested. For example, we have 19 percent of your account in energy. And energy is everything from oil companies, to refineries, to oil drillers, and to companies that makes equipment for oil drillers and oil refineries. So it's a pretty big piece of the energy market. And so 19 percent was there. Come on down and you'll see that we have 18 percent in consumer staples. That's, again, the staples, that's the Procter &amp; Gamble's that make stuff regardless of what the economy does, you would more than likely see, you still would be buying certain things, food, bread, milk, medicines, that would be your consumer staples. Our equity outlook is, sort of, has been changed some over the last few days. If you've seen the markets, we opened this morning and we were down 190 points before you even, we even got the markets completely open. At one time during the day, it was up 50 points, and it closed down about 25 points. That was just today. Yesterday, at the low, we were down 480 points, and it closed today down 150. That just shows the amount of volatility and uncertainty that's going on in the marketplace. And keep in mind, whether it's the bond market or the equity market, the only thing that these markets can't value is uncertainty. Well, this Ebola situation, you know, that's a big deal. It's a big deal because it's tragic, but it's a big deal because no one really, really understands what, how deadly this thing can be. Now, the CEO of the CDC in Atlanta spoke before Congress today, and they gave some late afternoon reports. And what he told Congress was, was that the chance of Ebola breaking out in the United States was almost zero. Well, I'm glad he said that, but I don't believe that's an American that nice and go to bed and really feel real good that that's the truth, simply because nobody really knows. You may remember when this thing first broke out in Dallas, they were saying by no way certainty cannot catch Ebola by air. Now, they think of this second lady that was diagnosed that it did in the airplane and all, that she was involved. So they don't know. My point is, that is a tremendous uncertainty. And we were talking a little bit earlier, well, how can that affect the economy? A real quick little analogy. Let's say that there are two couples that live in Columbus, Ohio, and they were planning to fly down to New Orleans to watch the Saints play football. Well, they go buy airline tickets, they're gonna stay in a hotel, they're gonna eat at restaurants, they're gonna have a fun time down on Bourbon Street, they're gonna go to the ballgame, they're gonna come back, eat dinner, eat breakfast, and fly back. Well, when something like Ebola comes about, what happens is they say, you know what, I'm not gonna take a chance, I'm gonna just stay home. And we're gonna watch it on TV, and maybe cook hamburgers. Well, that's fine, but look at the money, different opportunities for money to get put back into the economy, it's not getting put back in there. So if you extrapolate that over lots and lots and lots of people, you can see where that is the kind of thing that can really cause our economy, which is growing very slowly, to come to almost a screeching halt. Our outlook here is that we think that the economy in the United States is going to continue to be pretty slow in its growth. We've been talking about all year long, we thought the second half of this year would be, would be weak. We are currently in the midst of a correction, it began in late September. This geopolitical stuff, whether it's the Ebola in Africa, whether it's the Iran-Iraq situation, Syrian situation, ISIS situation, you know, these are geopolitical events going on that we have no control of, we being the United States. We're sort of trying to deal with it as best we can. And then there's a little bit of uncertainty, whether you're a Democrat, or Republican, or Independent. There, I think we'd all agree, there's a certain amount of uncertainty just in our government in general right now. Congress seems to have a different time agreeing on anything, the President and all of that. So there's just a lot of uncertainty in the world right now that these markets are having to, to deal with. We want to continue to purchase stocks that reflect our conservative money management style, like we've done for the last several years. When we find a company, whether it's, I'd say Procter &amp; Gamble, or Flowerspoons in Thomasville, whatever it happens to be, when it trades at what we feel like is a really good long-term value, we're going to try to start buying that stock at that time. We're not trying to see if the market bottoms out and try to catch something at the very bottom and then settle at the very top. That's just not how you manage an account like this. And so we are, again, we're trying to continue to find real value in our investments and take advantage of them. Matthews will talk to us a little bit about the fixed income part. As you, as you saw, we've got about 45 percent of your account in fixed income investments. And I think it's important that you understand not only, yes, we're buying fixed income, but sort of how do we decide, do we buy new money tomorrow in taxable municipal bonds, or just loan it to the U.S. federal government, where you're basically guaranteed to get the money back simply because of a full faith and credit of the United States government? Guaranteed is not a good word to use, but however, the assumption that investors all over the world use is that, that anything backed by the full faith and credit of the United States Federal Reserve and federal government is a risk-free law, a risk-free policy.
Hi, I'm Matt Rich, I work with Richard, and I'm the one who manages the fixed income for City of Tipton, most of the fixed income of the firm. To start off, on your fixed income, fixed income account, my job is to go through the different sectors, say municipals, taxable, agencies, mortgage backeds. I want to find what I believe is going to perform the best out of all those. I'm gonna look at the spreads, how much interest they're paying each one of them. There'll be a spread in between, say treasuries are risk-free, alright, they're paying 2%. Well then I can look at municipals, and it's paying 3. Well, is that 1% I'm gaining by municipals worth the extra risk I'm taking? And that's what I do, that's my job, trying to outperform the market. Currently, with what's going on in the world, the 10-year is kind of our benchmark we always look at, 10-year treasury. They started the year at 3%. A lot of people on TV, a lot of people in the news, everybody kept saying rates were gonna go up. Our view on that was opposite. We saw worldwide slowdown. Europe's slowing down, China's slowing down, Japan during recession, European recession. Saw deflation worldwide. First quarter in the U.S., our GDP was negative 2.3 percent, just continuing, so we expected rates to move lower, and that's what they did. We have, and the rates are kind of based off of GDP growth and inflation. So with both of those things both going down, that's why we expected rates to get lower. And we positioned your portfolio that way. I guess our outlook for the rest of the year, we expect rates to stay lower for longer. Don't see any real catalysts that's gonna push rates higher, and we're gonna keep positioned a little bit farther down the curve than most other institutions are, just because we believe rates are gonna stay lower for longer. And that has actually really helped our performance the past three years by doing that. GDP, second quarter GDP came in around 4%. This is obviously better than the first quarter, but a lot of this was due to inventory buildup. This is usually a one-off, looking for a weaker second half, third and fourth quarter, which should continue to push rates down. The Fed is gonna end their asset purchases, as their QE programs that have run for the past, since 2009. What they've done is they bought up all these bonds, and they own 40% of the market. Well, this causes a supply and demand issue. There's a lot of demand for U.S. treasuries right now with all that's going on geopolitically, and the Fed owns 40% of them. When you have more demand than you have supply, it's gonna drive rates down. So that's another reason why we think rates are gonna go lower, especially with the Fed, with their easy money policies. Employment, Richard, I want to get on that employment. Employment has improved, at least the employment rate, it's around 6.7%. On the other hand, you have a participation rate that's at the lowest since the 70s. So what you're seeing is people are just not looking for work anymore. For GDP to really pick up, and you start seeing growth in inflation, you need these people to get back to work. You need the good, high-paying jobs that are gonna help spend money and spur the economy. And we're just not seeing that right now. So for our outlook and how we're gonna stay positioned a little bit longer the curve, we're actually adding a little bit to U.S. treasuries, moving out of some corporate bonds. We think the, I guess credit risk has gotten a little more, I guess for us, has been increasing core bonds, and we feel better about treasuries right now. So probably next year when you see your appraisal, you'll see a lot more treasury weighting.
What this shows here is just a snapshot of your portfolio, and you can see from what we paid for your bonds and what they're worth, on June 30th, you had a gain of $230,650. And these same bonds generated $291,000 in interest income. We are staying fairly short, and the current yield was 3.51%. So as you can see, we're trying to balance, you have the equities in one basket, and they're performing, and they're generating about a 2% yield, but they were up 28%. Then we got another basket of bonds, and they were up some, but they generated a real nice income, and they were up around 3%. And then we have a nice position of cash. So these are three baskets that work together, but normally, if the stocks start going down, a lot of that money will move into bonds. If the interest rates get too low, it'll move out of bonds into stocks. So we have three different baskets that this money continues to move to, and if we have a diversified property, which we have so far, then that's how we balance the risk and balance the income. And just to summarize, we are in Thomasville, and we've known each other for a pretty good while. We are not scared of the market, but we do feel like that the overall economy in this country is still growing at a very, very slow rate. Now, we don't think we're in any kind of recession, but, you know, today they announced Europe is in the third recession in six years, that's one every two years, and they don't even party out of one till it's back. And so then you bring in the scare of these international markets from this Ebola fright, and then this ISIS situation in the Middle East, well, you can just see, there's just a lot of very negative things going on that can certainly have an impact on, on the overall markets. What I've always tried to say when we're talking about this is, you know, I'd rather miss a little bit of return on the top side than to get so invested to where if we do have a backup in the market, we take a real lick. 2008, the market was down 32%, our account was down about 12%. So that's what we've got here. We want to make as great a return as we can, but most of all, we don't want to participate in those moves if the market really takes a really hard, hard correction. We're down about 8% from its high through today, so we are in a correction mode. And we did a little bit of investing yesterday and today in the city's account for some of the cash that we've got, because some of the companies that we wanted to buy over the last few days have come down in price. And, you know, they're the same companies, they make the same widgets, they got the same people running them. It's just, we're buying them sort of on sale. We didn't want to buy them at the higher prices, but now some of these companies are becoming, and that's what the plan was, that's why we're carrying this extra cash. That's why we've got the cash, so we could have fresh powder to buy companies when they do get into a more valuable range. So all in all, we had a really good year, our year this year, yes, we've had some backup in the market, but our bonds, again, bounced off to a certain extent. So we're very comfortable with where we are, we're trying to be very patient. This is a very long-term account, and we just got to make sure there's plenty of money there for the young folks when they get ready to retire, just the same way as those that are closer to retirement. Any questions or suggestions?
What was our overall gain on the portfolio?
12.6 percent, that's, that's stocks, bonds, and cash.
Does, do we have a certain rating when we go into municipal bonds, that we say, okay, the treasury?
Everything is investment grade, so munis, I always stay A or better. And underlying rating is what I'm more interested in, and they're always A or better.
The terms of those municipal bonds, are they, are they the 10-years, sort of like treasuries? Do we ever invest any 1, 3, and 5s?
Yeah, we invest, we have it laddered out.
Okay.
It's 1 through 10, we're more, we've invested in the 3 to 7 range for the past couple of years. The only thing you'll see out with the longer maturity are gonna be your Jenny Mays, your Fannie Mae mortgage-backed securities, and those actually, the average life on them are actually like six years. Say they maturen 39, but they'll have paid out by, in six years.
But all of our fixed income investments are investment grade. So that takes a lot of the risk out of the bond market, because the high-yield type bonds, you know, it's not, they're not candidates for this kind of a category.
That's right.
Richard, we appreciate you.
Thank y'all very much for letting us work for you.
Well, we've been doing it a long time, I remember when Bud and I were on this, this commission back then.
That's right.
Brought you to Tipton.
And some of the young fellows that were in the meeting beforehand, we decided we're not born yet. That sort of got my attention anyway. I had hair then and...
Richard, I want to ask you one important question.
Yes, sir.
You can be seated, go ahead, be seated. After hearing you talk, I was planning to carry Vicki out to eat tonight, but it's still be safe to do that?
I'd go ahead and do that. But I'd make sure it's thick steaks and all that, I mean, let's...
How do we eat?
I'll tell you what.
One of those, one of those sandwiches. A little bit of fish.
Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate y'all, appreciate y'all so much.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Next item of business is the discussion of proposal for the excavator and the articulated dump truck, or off-highway dump truck. Ricky Hobson?
All right, y'all should have in your packets there, two items there before you. We'll look at the track-mounted hydraulic excavator first. We had four proposals were sent out, four returned with three meeting specs. Proposal calls for a track-mounted hydraulic excavator, and the funds that were budgeted over in the sanitation side, with the, in lieu of the transition that's going on with sanitation, we are wanting to use the monies from sanitation to purchase this excavator for the landfill. So it is budgeted, but it was just budgeted over one of the other cost centers. All right, and this is, of course, to be coming from our capital improvement program. The machine actually will be replacing a dirt pan we have at the landfill now, which is a 1998 model, it's had its life, and it's on the last leg, so that's actually what we'll be replacing with that unit. The proposal also further includes a provision for a five-year buyback of the machine, yielding a total capital cost to owning the machine for that time period to allow for more accurate budgeting and cost control. Staff recommends the proposal be awarded to Yancy Brothers with their proposal of $21893 and a net five-year cost of $104,812.
So you planned equipment right there with them, weren't you?
Yes.
What is that, a hundred and something, a hundred and...
Less than a hundred dollars.
A hundred and fifty bucks, God bless. Those are big companies.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
You said there was, you said there was four that fitted, what was the fourth that just got kicked out?
Wallace, Wallace Equipment from Valdosta, it's a case dealer, they did the specs with a couple of items on the spec sheet. Okay, the other exhibit you have there before you is the used articulated off-highway dump truck, six-wheel drive. Four proposals were sent out, four returned, and actually one meeting all the specs. Several of them didn't meet the criteria of the hours that we requested for a used vehicle. And another one also, the model did not, was one of the reasons that they didn't meet specs. And then one of the other reasons that part of the heated body we asked for in these specs, they weren't met by another one. But this proposal calls for the used off-highway dump truck, budgeted funds of $325,000, which were approved from the capital improvement program. This machine also carries a powertrain, hydraulics, and components warranty good until 2/24/2019, or 6,000 hours, whichever comes first. Even though it is a used piece of equipment, it's still got pretty much a full warranty for five more years.
I say the 1650 hour on it, what's the year model?
It's a 2013, I believe, is what it is. Yeah, it's a 2013.
What's the average hours that you use?
Well...
On a truck like that, on equipment?
Well, I don't know that I'll even be able to tell you that, because we've never had one on the land. What we've always used is dirt pan, and I mean, it runs eight hours a day, but this won't, because we can haul a lot more dirt with it, you know, than we can with this dirt pan we have. Plus, rainy days like Tuesday, you can't cover trash, you can't do anything, because you can't dig dirt. This here will allow us to be able to operate during those rainy days also, bad weather, and it won't stop us from digging dirt and covering trash, and stay in compliance with EPD.
Six-wheel drive?
Yes.
That's gonna be a hog.
It is. The tires are about as tall as you are.
Wow.
But staff recommends awarding this proposal to ASC Construction, they're out of Butford, Georgia, for proposal was for $270,000.
And we had a 325 budget for that?
So three of the proposals didn't meet specs?
Yes, some of them where the hours were over what we had requested, and also, there was one that, like I said, the body itself didn't meet the specs we had put in. The other ones are year models, and then the third one didn't meet the hours, but also, it only had a powertrain warranty. With this one here, you get the powertrain, hydraulics, and components, which is pretty much a full warranty for five years. The other one had a powertrain warranty, I think, for two more years.
Yeah. And nobody tipped and bid on this, this truck?
No, sir, nobody cares anything around.
How much time do we have to have to be in compliance with EPD to get it to compliance? With that compliance now?
Well, it's, it's just a daily thing.
Oh, okay.
You know, with covering garbage, you know, it's a daily thing.
Okay. The EPD drops in, pays us a visit, announces from town to town, and I don't think we have any outstanding issues at this time, do we?
No, we, we had a couple of them, their last visit, they've been taken care of, so right now we're, we're in total compliance with them.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ricky. Next item, Mr. Robinson, the board report?
Yes, we have two people on the zoning board of appeals whose terms expire November the 30th, that's Dale Sumner and Freddie Walker. I have not contacted them, I wanted to know your closure before I did. If you'd like me to, I'd be happy to contact them.
Oh, yeah. I just saw Freddie somewhere, Cracker Barrel, we saw Freddie at Cracker Barrel.
I'll report that, that to you via email, so you can take action at the next meeting.
Good. Yeah, it'd be good, they want to stay on. All right, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Discussion of synopsis of agenda items, Mr. Larry Adams.
In your packet, you will see a memo that came from Chris Beckham. What he did was he took an agenda of one of our meetings, and he did us a summary of what the, that particular agenda item talked about. And basically, what we want to know is, if you have a chance to look at that, because I know y'all got these yesterday, is that something that y'all would like for staff to do, is provide, or for Chris to do, is every time we have an agenda, just to get with, with me and the rest of the staff, and we'll put together a short summary of each agenda item, what we're actually gonna talk about when it comes to it, and then go ahead and send it to the newspaper, put it on the website. You know, we've been requested to put the agendas out earlier, but if we're gonna do that, then the folks probably don't even know what we're only talking about, because sometimes they're kind of nondescript with all the agendas.
Is, what, this synopsis, is this it right here?
That's it.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
That's a synopsis of the last meeting, actually, so you all could see what it would be like.
If we put something in the paper, I mean, obviously, sometimes it's subject to change.
They are, this will have to be after we finalize the agenda.
Right.
But so, trying to use our communications gap.
How much we paid?
Sir?
How much did we pay?
We contributed 15,000 a year to the chamber, he works for the chamber, City of Tipton, school, not school, the UGAIC.
Development Authority.
Development Authority.
We're getting it pretty cheap.
Very cheap.
And these work favors being here.
Yes.
Every, any.
So if that's something y'all would like, of course, we'll start preparing those, and he'll get them to the newspaper and they'll run it as a public service announcement, hopefully.
It doesn't mean we can't change our agenda if we have to.
Well, I know that, I just know sometimes when we'll, we'll table something maybe, or, I mean, I don't know.
That's right.
You know, it's subject to change, I just want to let them know this.
We'll wait till, as long as we can before we put it out there.
Yeah, give them a...
And that disclaimer can also be put here.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we did that, I would like something on the bottom, and at least saying, obviously, it's subject to change, whatnot. You know, just so, I mean, that people don't say, hey, well, I thought you said you were gonna talk about this and whatnot.
Right.
It's a little time to time.
Exactly.
I'm a little skish about it, but let's see how it works, you know, we'll cut it out later, we don't like it.
You could just, I mean, among the items to be discussed, you'd say, among the items anticipated to be discussed.
There you go.
Something real easy.
He's been wordsmithing contracts a little bit, way too much.
Now, did he charge us extra for that? Stuff like that?
Built into that hour.
That's right. Thank you, Larry, that's good call.
I think the next item is landfill agreement.
The joint resolution, in a local agreement with Tipton County?
Well, you have before you is a joint resolution, operating city manager and county manager to enter into an in-home agreement for the landfill fund. It should be pretty clear after that.
You see why?
I think it starts on page 15.
The red, they should do that, Larry. You guys choose?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we're ready.
Okay, joint, joint uh, resolution, and then, then the interlocal agreement for the landfill, uh, operation of landfill, joint operation of landfill. As you know, we've had the city and county own the landfill fifty-fifty. Both the inert and subtitle D, elements of full rate. Uh, you recall back several months ago when uh, both the city and county, uh, city council, county commission authorized the managers to enter into negotiations for contract for collection of solid waste within the city and county. Uh, so what we had to do was go back when we started working on this thing. Uh, we uh, found out that in order for us to do these independently of each other, then we had to repeal the Dino five, the Dino five A of the interlocal agreement pertaining to solid waste collection disposal. So, we, we, with the skillful uh, hands and minds of our attorney here, came up with this version, these are drafts. Uh, we're still having to work with the county on some of the issues um, regarding the operation of the landfill and how those funds are being uh, invested and what have you. So, there will be tweaks to this interlocal agreement uh, before it comes back to you. These tweaks we hope will occur within the next two weeks before the November meeting.
I hope so.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna call for the question, tell you, I'm getting a lot of heat. We've been really...
We gotta get it right, Mayor.
We, we gotta, we gotta get it right by the next meeting.
Well, the county's sitting over there waiting on go, so we're, we're there. We have been working on this almost every day this week, and Jim Carter and I have been working on it for the past two weeks, along with Ricky Hoddie. So, it's been a long time, and, and we finally got it about where it needs to be. Okay?
I'll see you.
I'm, 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 I'm telling you.
I guess my question, uh, this, this draft that we have in front of us here, that is what you guys have already, I mean, I know you guys talked several times, met several, several hours. Is this pretty much, I mean, this is pretty much it?
Wes, are you talking about the contract or the...
No, no, I'm talking about the interlocal agreement.
The interlocal agreement. There's still uh, some things that the county, as of today, requested that we wanted to have a little bit more oversight and say-so about the operation of landfill. As it stands right now, the City of Tifton is the administrator of that fund. And uh, all of the employees at landfill are City of Tifton employees, and they fall under disciplinary action and procedures, and all of the procedures for the City of Tifton. And that's what we want to keep it. Now, they have requested to have a little bit more say in the operation of the landfill. I don't know what a little more oversight or say means, and I've asked the county manager to get back to me with any suggestions he may have to change this agreement, and we didn't get that today. That just happened today. Okay?
But they've had that agreement for a while. Is there waiting to hear back from now?
He needs to know this, Mr. Robbins.
We, we sent them a draft.
Last week, that's early last week.
That's right.
Oh, listen, I, I know that, that y'all have done due diligence, I know y'all burn the night on, but it's, it's just time to pull the trigger on this.
Okay. Any other questions about the landfill agreement?
My banker friend got much stuff highlighted on that.
Nah, that's just for me to know what I'm looking at.
Okay, the next one you have on the agenda is the contract with Golden Environmental for the collection of solid waste uh, within the corporate limits of City of Tifton. That includes solid waste, well, I use that generically, that includes your garbage, recyclables, uh,
Badle.
Garb debris, and your badle.
Sure.
Now, initially, we were going to consider the option of the county picking up all of the commercial stuff inside the city limits. And we got down to the interlocal agreement, and you're talking about a hundred and eighty-day outlaws in interlocal agreement and a five-year contract with the county, that the county would still have with Golden Environmental to continue to pick up within the city, it was kind of an issue that we didn't, won't have to deal with. So, yesterday, we redid it, so that now, city council has complete say over all of the collection of solid waste within the City of Tifton. That means commercial, industrial, uh, everything, recyclables, and you got the say on how the rates get established and set. You'll see in there, there are agendas in there that have rates in them, and I'll talk about those in just a minute.
Larry, can I just interject one thing?
Certainly, sir.
One of the things, when we want to, you know, go back to, to the city, you know, handling the commercial, we want to make sure that in the event, you know, if the county had it, uh, they could up the rates, you know, with Richard, and we would have no control over that. Whereas if we contract with Richard for collecting the commercial rates, we have control over price increases.
Good, good, very good.
Thanks for turning that up.
Very, very good. Now, you can say that. Can you put the...
Throw them a softball. We have uh, we have, we, we have freshmen in our eyeballs and ears and paperwork.
Yeah.
Okay, um...
Just full of garbage, aren't you?
We are just full of garbage. That's... Okay, um, the contract you have before you is a five-year contract, rates are set, are locked in for three years. Okay? So, for the first three years of contract, the collection within the city limits is going to be fifteen thirteen, as it stands right now, per can, per month. That's the same fee that's charged to the county. The difference is this, because we're going to continue to do billing inside the city limits for residential, uh, Golden Environmental will do billing for commercial and recycling and all that kind of stuff. But for residential billing, uh, we sat down, uh, Jim Carter and I sat down, we determined, along with Mr. Golden, that the discount for billing inside the city will be one dollar per can. We added that one dollar per can back into the cost of picking up that container because we have indirect costs associated with billing the, the garbage customers. Uh, the dollar a can generates about fifty-five thousand dollars a year. That, that is not all of the costs associated with billing in the service fund. Uh, other funds that would contribute to that would be the other enterprise funds, which would be your gas, water, sewer, and solid waste fund.
Okay.
So, the cost for picking up garbage at the residents inside the city is going to be exactly the same cost as it is for picking up garbage in the county. So, they're be same across the board. But we have to have that money, we have to make up that loss of revenue for the service fund someplace, and that's how to do it. And you're still six dollars a month per can less than what you're paying now, is that correct?
But we're still the same as the county, and you can't tell me we can't pick it up cheap in the county. So, there's a surcharge embedded in this to help with the billing, is that, is that why it's costing us the same to pick it up in the city than it is the county?
It's part of, that extra dollar is part of the cost of billing. In other words, if, if Richard was going to bill the city customers,
Right.
he would charge another dollar on top of that fourteen thirteen.
That's right, I understand. So, this is just a dollar?
Just a dollar.
It wasn't a surcharge that had been thought of, that's, that's gone?
That one that we talked about?
Yes.
It, it's gone.
Thank you, okay, I'm okay.
Okay.
Well, you said that story, that's great, that's great, okay. Good deal.
You said make up the cost.
There are four enterprise funds.
Are they going to split the cost to make that up, so?
This will be the part, this will be the part for billing for the solid waste garbage.
Right.
Residential garbage.
Right.
We still have landfill funds that are in the service fund. We still have costs, or service fund costs, indirect costs, whatever, overhead. But for all of those funds that we have to bill for, so all of that cost is going to be spread across all the funds.
Even? What I'm saying is, is we're going to have to make up that money somewhere, so are we going to increase on other services?
Think about this.
Right.
In the solid waste fund, there's five cost centers. All five of those cost centers, the service fund costs are split across all five centers. Okay, so the cost for that is split across the five cost centers that are currently in the solid waste collection disposal fund. There are other charges there, which I have not run the numbers on those yet. I don't know exactly how it's going to break down since we've done all these things that we're doing right now, with the public works and the solid waste and all that, I don't know what the exact breakdown's going to be. I know about what, I think I know about what it's going to be, if I'm not sure. That's why this is a draft.
That's, that's okay, that's good.
And it, now, inside the city limits of Tifton, what you're going to get for fifteen dollars and thirteen cents, you're going to get your household garbage picked up once a month?
Once a week.
I'm sorry, once a week.
Once a week.
It's going to be a stinking... Now, once a week, your household garbage. Your, to start with, you will get your recyclables picked up every other week. Okay? You will get your bulky items picked up every other week, and your yard debris, yard debris picked up every other week. Why you got to bring them up, Mayor?
Well, I'm, I'm okay. Maybe we can work towards getting that yard debris every week, maybe.
Well, that's not what's in the contract.
Okay.
That was not what was in the RFP.
Okay.
So...
When you say bulky, you're talking about the...
The clatter of free...
Yeah, yeah, two-dollar charge, yeah. Okay.
Now, the question I have for council is, is this the direction that you want staff to continue to pursue? Is there anything you want changed about this? Because if we got to change it, now's time to do it.
Phew, got me in a spot there.
If, if you think of something between now and the council...
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm okay with what I've heard so far, but I, I've taken these out of my book.
Golden is going to be char, or, not charging, but they're, they're going to be handling the billing for the recycling, is that right?
Yes.
That's...
And I need, there's two other things I need to talk to you about on this contract. You will notice in the, when you get to the addendums that have the pricing in there, there is an increase, a small increase in the commercial rates. Okay? That increase would have already been there had we not been trying to resolve issues between the city and county before, and, and we didn't change anything. You remember that, Mayor?
I did.
Okay. So, we did, we, in the solid waste fund, were not allowed to change any pricing for about four years. Okay?
Okay.
That's, that, that cost, that small increase in the commercial rates, is probably a little bit on the low side to what it should be, that, that's a good price. And uh, it's a lot closer to the actual cost of disposal than what we were. Okay? You might get a little bit of flack on the pricing, I don't think you're going to get much just because of the increase. Was it seven dollars a week? On the, once a month, or two times a month? It was for forty-three.
Fifty, yeah.
Should have been there already. The other part you're going to get is recycling, commercial recycling in particular. Right now, we don't charge for recycling at all. Ricky's guys go around, they pick it up free, carry it to the recycling plant, we sell what we can sell, and the rest of it, we dispose of, however we need to dispose of. Plastics and cardboard, we're doing pretty good right now. Glass will not be part of the recyclables because you can't hardly give that stuff away.
Okay.
Uh, but, if you, when you look at the pricing sheet on recycling, it's about twenty-five a month, is that right? For pickup? What difference does that make?
Fifteen a week.
Commercial recycling?
Yes.
Fifty-one for... Fifty-one sixty for a six-yard container?
Yes.
Once a week? And eighty, sixty-eight eighty-four, eight dollars per container, once a week.
That, they're not paying for right now, at all. And if that costs, if any losses that we had in our recycling, the solid waste fund, were being absorbed from the subtitle D landfill fund, that's why it was, it was a loser for us.
Is this, okay, it's mandatory?
Let me ask you.
No.
Were you through?
No, it's not.
The, the recycling will be negotiated between Golden Environmental and the uh, property, the commercial business, whoever it is.
Commercial recycling is what they call a special service negotiated with Richard. And um, I think the, the issue naturally is going to be is that you got to pay for your recycling, it's going to wind up in the landfill.
The other part of that equation is, the business owners need to understand that if they break those cardboard boxes down, and primarily, that's what it is down in the downtown area, if they break those down and put them in those recycling bins, it's going to be less expensive than it is to throw it in their dumpster and take up all that space that they have to have that dumpster that, uh, get you more frequently. And that's an education process. Probably need to go over a good start with, but you guys need to be aware that when we start going out there and telling them that, hey, you're fixing to have to start paying for recycling if you want to recycle your cardboard, that's, that's going to be an issue.
Okay.
Larry, can I ask a question?
Certainly, sir.
Is there still going to be a recycling center where if they want to take it down there themselves, they can?
Good point. In the county contract, they have, if they haven't taken it down, and I haven't seen the final version of the county contract, but Southside Recycling Center, uh, the last version we saw was going to remain open. And there were, there was no charge for recycling down there at South Central Side. That was the last version that we saw.
Okay.
And you could pay recyclables, throw your blue bag, uh, they were going to take motor oils and any kind of recycling, petroleum products.
Antifreeze.
Antifreeze and all that kind of stuff, and... Did they treat yard debris or not, I couldn't remember?
It said that they would be remaining yard debris and some.
So, it's the county side, we're in the county.
Are you right, we pay county taxes?
So... I don't know if it's still in there or not, but the last time I saw that contract, which was made before yesterday, it was still in.
I'll think that you keep it, you pay county.
You go back to...
But I mean, why would you do it?
Oh, of course, of course.
I mean, so, go back to this joint resolution draft.
Yes.
Does that, will that, could that mess up anything with, I mean, by doing that, because you're saying that those businesses are in the city? We're acting on the best interest of the City of Tifton, and we're collecting it ourselves. I mean, we're, we're entering into an agreement ourselves. I mean, is that, I don't want to screw up anything, you know what I'm saying? I don't want to, by signing this, they go and know to that, you know what I mean? If you go, I'm saying. Okay. Here, on the uh, joint resolution, it says, uh, city and county determine that it's best interest of citizens in Tifton to independently contract private equity to collect trash. And then, if the, will the county or with the fund own those recycling sites?
The county will own it, they're in the county, they own by the county. That's not, that's not part of the fund.
Okay.
Right.
The only thing that's going to be left in the solid waste fund is the landfills. That's it. There won't be any.
Everything else is clean.
Everything else is gone.
Do you understand, do you, do you see what I'm saying?
I think I do, but, I mean, the fact that, you know, because we'll have to have, you know, we're going to have to give Richard Golden an exclusive franchise to operate in the city, as will the county.
Right.
And so, actually, we'll have separate contracts, but I think that my understanding is if, you know, as a county resident, you know, I can use, you know, whatever collection centers I have. So, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay. All right. Answer my question?
One final little tidbit.
Yes, sir.
Several years ago, uh, you and Ricky and your eminent wisdom came up with a split idea along those alleys downtown. Rather than have separate trash cans, we did a community dumpster.
Yes, sir.
How will this affect the community dumpster mindset?
That's a good question. We're still, well, the owner's still, is there, this requires us to have a community dumpster. That's a legal issue we're going to have to address.
I never, didn't know about that.
I know you didn't, I, I didn't think about it. I know you found that hard to believe, but... But actually, uh, I don't know how we're going to deal with that. Ron and I worked on that.
Probably need to address that at least.
It does need to be addressed.
Let us, let us know.
It shouldn't be too bad.
No.
I don't think so.
So, you think we hit it in the right place, you guys?
I certainly do.
I've looked over the contract, it looks, I mean, I, I think everything looks good as far as that's concerned and everything else, Fred. I was, you answered my question, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
Now, when it comes to closing this, uh, the provisions are in both contracts that uh, Golden Environmental will bring a cashier's check for seven hundred and ten thousand dollars for the container, purchase of the containers. Another hundred and twenty-five thousand for the purchase... Another hundred and twenty-five thousand for the purchase of recycling equipment. We're still massaging that inventory a little bit. That's it at closing, bringing this. And those, those funds will then be deposited into the landfill fund to go towards the closure, post closure cost at landfill. The other part of that is, any assets that remain in any of those cost centers that we're not going to keep, uh, they will be sold on GoDeals with the proper legal notice. You got to say, I told you so.
That's right.
They'll be sold on GoDeals or any of those websites that we can sell them. We anticipate there'll be two or three, several hundred thousand dollar worth of revenue that earned from that. And then that will also go in the closure, post closure account. So, uh, so the deficit that we previously thought we had in the closure and post closure account for the monitoring after the landfill's closed, it will be back on track and be fully funded for that year. Providing we get the vertical expansion, which will bring us up to about another twenty years of life in the landfill. Okay?
Okay, now, sum this all up. Chris was part of this, and you need to appraise him another time.
I will.
Julie was real concerned about being sure she understood this whole thing. She and I had a conversation probably three and a half weeks ago.
I will be happy to.
Please be sure they both understand everything that we've discussed, and, uh, because really, we need to vote on this next public meeting. So, I want everybody to have a good, strong feeling and be happy and okay with it, so we really need to push that. Get a lot of pressure.
Call me in the morning.
Sure. And be sure Julie's.
I'll make sure that everyone's part of the state.
Okay. Of course, I'm sure that.
I think that's the last item on the agenda, boss.
Well, you want to, but it, but it, that's all. Let, let me, uh, just thank everybody, and let me just, uh, just make a heartfelt request, because I truly believe this is, my mom is a dire needed prayer. And everybody with the sound of my voice, I just ask you to please keep in your prayer that God will be done, that, uh, things will work out. I'm not ready to lose my mom. Please, please, please pray. Thank y'all for a good meeting. Appreciate it. We're adjourned.